7:31 and so everybody's ready to go. I'm gonna call the regular meeting of the Temple City City Council order August 4th, 2020. Uh, why don't we start with our roll call first. So, Madam Clerk?
Who wants to go?
Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Councilmember Visgara?
Here.
Mayor Protemu?
Can you hand me that book and that?
I'm here.
Thank you. Mayor Chavez?
Here. Okay, everyone is present. Before we move on to the invocation, I just want to remind everyone those who are calling in, your microphone will be unmuted during public comment and when public comment is open during an agendized item discussion. You can also email your request to cityclerk@templicity.us. Do that now and indicate on the subject line the item you wish to provide comment. Okay, so let's start with, um, item number three, our invocation. Uh, if you'll join me in prayer. Precious Lord, please give us guidance in this meeting because a lack of guidance causes a nation to fail, but victory is won through many advisors. Lord, let us not be misguided in this meeting so that we do not lead to decisions that produce ineffective results. I pray that you direct our steps so that this meeting can be productive. We ask this in your name. Amen. Okay, so now we will move on to our pledge of allegiance and I'm, do we have our flag there? Miss, Miss City Clerk? There we go. We've got our flag. So if everyone will please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. All right, we will now move on to ceremonial matters. We have one this evening. We are going to be having a report on the committing of, of, on aging. We'll get an update from our Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Matsumoto. Is he here? There he is, right in the middle. Okay, didn't recognize you Adam with that extra facial hair.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez. Thank you, uh, Mayor Chavez and members of the City Council. I just have a quick update on the verbal update on the Committee on Aging. Um, the Committee on Aging had to, um, cancel their April meeting due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Um, but we were able to reconvene, um, for two meetings. We held a special meeting on June 24th for the Committee on Aging. Um, at that meeting, we were able to reappoint four of our committee members. Committee member Lucy Liu was re-elected as the committee chair and, uh, committee member Michael Wintercorn was re-elected as a committee vice chair. Um, at this meeting, we also went over our updates, uh, the city's update on our COVID-19 response. Uh, we, uh, showed the committee our presentation on the 2020 Older American of the Year winner and then provided our 2019 Temple City Master Plan progress report. Um, after that, we held our regularly scheduled meeting on July 28th with the Committee on Aging. So the focus of that meeting was really to, uh, reevaluate and, and identify new goals for 2020. Um, at the beginning of the year in January, the committee sets action steps for the year, uh, for the committee to accomplish with our older adult population. Um, obviously, we're in a much different environment now, so, uh, a subcommittee was formed at this meeting to identify ways that we can still impact our older American, older adult population, uh, during our COVID-19 time. So that's what they're currently working on right now, and that concludes my, uh, presentation.
Great, thank you. Does, uh, are there any questions, uh, for Mr. Matsumoto from council? Okay, great. Well, thank you very much and thank you for continuing to work with that. I know it's been difficult, but, uh, we appreciate that update. Thank you.
Thank you.
And also thank you for, um, all the things that you guys have been doing over in the Parks and Rec. I want to ask you before you leave, how did the Campa Palooza, uh, turn out?
Oh, we actually had a fantastic turnout. Uh, during the city manager's report, if we have time, uh, we'll actually provide an update on some of our summer, uh, virtual programming, uh, Parks and Recreation.
Okay, great. We probably should wait for that anyway since it's not on the agenda. Thank you. Okay, I don't want, uh, our city attorney giving me those dirty looks like, what are you doing now? Okay, all right, let me, let me find my place again here. Okay, so now we will, uh, move on to our public comments. Uh, City Council, uh, will now hear, hear public comments regarding items not listed on the agenda. Uh, I'll begin by asking our city clerk if there are any email requests to speak at this time.
No, Mayor, there are no email requests to speak.
Okay, is there anybody on the line who would like to speak?
I'm on the line, Franklin Riddell.
Okay, Franklin, go ahead.
Yes, um, I noted something that I think is worthy of comment from the City Council, if they haven't already noted it, that there is the, uh, flag to the, um, unknown soldier that's waving above our post office now uh, due to a, um, President proclamation. And I thought maybe a kind letter back to the postmaster for honoring that and, and putting it up there along with the American flag would be appropriate.
Okay, well, thank you. I, I was not aware of that personally, um, but, um, I'm sure that's a great idea and, uh, we'll take care of that. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Now, I had two other items that didn't make the, uh, agenda. Um, can I speak back to the city clerk about those?
Um, well, since they're not on the agenda, we, we can't discuss them, but now is the time for your public comments on items not on the agenda. Did you want to share with us anything else?
Well, I was, I have a, had a property concern, um, to, um, um, my back fence is caving in, um, not on my property, but it is still my back fence. Um, and I, and, and there's fire debris up on the other side of that fence also. And then on the other side, there looks like they, they took out a, um, this is on Garibaldi. The other one was on, um, Burton. Uh, the Garibaldi, they took out a, a pool. And I thought there was going to be some building there and I would like to, like to have notification of whatever does, is transpiring there so that I can see to it that my property line is, is protected at that point.
Okay, well, um, our, I know our city manager has heard your comments and we will certainly, I, I would suggest that, uh, you contact City Hall with those issues and, uh, perhaps give them some more information. And then I'm sure they will be able to go out there and take a look to see if there's anything that the city needs to take care of. So that would be my recommendation to you at this time.
Okay, can you give me the, when you say City Hall, somebody in particular or some group in particular?
Well, there, obviously, there's a, the call say, Brian, what, what's the best number for him to call?
626-285-2171, extension 4105.
4105, okay.
And whoever, if, uh, you should get someone, if not, leave a message and they will follow up with you immediately, so. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you very much for those comments. Anyone else on the line?
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, hearing no one, I will go ahead and close public comments and we will now be ready to move on to item number seven, our consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended, uh, unless removed for further discussion. Uh, do we have anyone that would like to remove any items? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Uh, I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Okay. And we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, thank you. If we could have roll call, please.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Visgara?
He's muted.
You're on mute, Fernando.
I, I just realized that, yes.
Mayor, uh, Mayor Protemu?
Yeah.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, um, next item is public hearing. There is none. Uh, before we move on to item nine, unfinished business, I'm gonna take things a little bit out of order to, um, on the agenda. So rather than going to item number nine, we're going to go ahead and move to item 10 and we'll come back to item nine, uh, after that. So, uh, let's move on to item number 10. Uh, and the first item under 10 is a, uh, item A, temporary outdoor dining request. And I believe we're going to have a presentation by, uh, our interim community development director. Or Brian, are you gonna introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor Chavez. I'll introduce that and, uh, turn it over to Mr. Reimers. Uh, the council, this along with the next item about temporary banner permits, the staff brought forward as well. There was some questions regarding the temporary, uh, dining, uh, efforts that we've been trying to do, uh, related to the permitting process, costs and other things. So Mr. Reimers will go over that and, um, if it is the council's desire tonight to discussing waiving those fees, um, uh, you can make the motion tonight to waive some of those fees. Mr. Reimers will talk about the costs of some of those, of both of those for the banners and for the outdoor dining. Uh, we haven't had that many, but I'll, I'll, Mr. Reimers, uh, kind of briefly go through first the outdoor dining permit process.
Hey, we, we're gonna take those as separate, separate items, correct?
Yes, sorry, excuse me, Mayor Chavez. We are, I, I commingled the two at first.
All right, so we'll start with the temporary outdoor dining request. So, Mr. Reimers, it's all yours.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Um, the temporary outdoor dining request, um, can be looked at in three different categories. Uh, the first is, uh, temporary outdoor dining in the public right-of-way. Or the dining could occur on private walkways or plazas, or they could occur on private parking lots. So we'll, uh, just, uh, present on each of those one at a time. So in terms of the public right-of-way, um, if someone wants to, for instance, put out a table and have, uh, chairs and do dining outside along the sidewalk, that's something the code already allows. It's already in the zoning code. It was a carryover from the downtown specific plan. Those sorts of applications, um, the code says should be approved by the community development director. Uh, it has some very specific provisions and performance standards on, on how that should occur. Um, the director can also add some additional conditions of approval as well. Um, and a decision can be appealed to the planning commission. So the, the entitlement that's used is called a zoning clearance and that's a very simple procedure. It's the most simp, it's the simplest in, um, our zoning code. The fee for that entitlement is $46. And one thing that I didn't mention in the staff report is that whenever somebody uses the public right-of-way or, um, does construction on the public right-of-way, there's also an encroachment permit that's required and that's $265. And so, um, as part of the recommendation, we'd like to get your feedback on whether those, um, fees should be, um, should be waived. And so that's the $46 entitlement fee for the zoning clearance and $265 for the encroachment permit. Um, the second type of application would be if someone wanted to use a private walkway or a private plaza, um, space at a use. And really, what we're just recommending here is that we would handle that the same way as we would handle the public sidewalk dining permit. The third one is the trickiest and that's when someone wants to use a private parking lot, um, to do outdoor dining. Uh, so there's obviously safety concerns about having people, um, dine in a location where there would be, um, either pedestrians or even vehicles. And another tricky issue would be, um, what do we do about sufficient onsite parking? Um, some cities we've looked at, um, have just not looked at parking at all and they've said just you can use as much of the property as you want for outside dining. Um, some cities have developed a formula about how much parking should be used. Um, in our perspective, um, we believe from what we've been able to see is that parking demand right now is very low. Um, so what we're recommending is that, um, you would, um, that we would limit the number of parking spaces based on the capacity that the restaurant already has. So if the restaurant already can serve 20 people, then we would just say you can use, um, enough parking spaces to get back to 20. Um, we do, we would require property owner approval, um, so that the property owner can make sure that they've taken into consideration their other tenants and so they have to, um, review and, uh, uh, sign that application. So this is, so we as staff would review that application and we'd have the ability to modify some conditions of approval. Um, right now, we would propose to have building, planning and engineering staff review these applications, um, to make sure that they're safe and, uh, that all the issues are handled. Uh, and then we included in your packet, um, some potential conditions of approval that we, um, pulled from our surrounding cities, including Pasadena, El Monte, Rosemead, Monrovia, San Gabriel and Arcadia. Um, and so those conditions of approval look at a lot of different things such as hours of operation, requirements from the State Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, noise, um, path of travel, ADA requirements, fencing and so on. Uh, to date, we've received, um, two applications for outdoor dining. Uh, one is the dive and the other is Lotus House. So, um, with that, we're looking for direction from you on whether this is the process you'd like to follow or whether you'd like to modify that. Um, and, um, we'd like to get your feedback and consider waiving those processing fees, um, related to these, uh, zoning clearances and the encroachment permit. So with that, I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. So why don't we begin with questions, uh, from council? I'll begin with Councilmember Visgara. Um, do you have any questions, uh, for Reimers?
Where is Lotus House?
Uh, Lotus House is over by the office store on Rosemead. It's just north of, of the.
I'm sorry, I'm taking a lot of feedback. I couldn't hear you.
It, it's in that Kmart shopping center.
Oh, okay. And, and where do they want to go out front?
Yes, they want to use the parking spaces directly in front of their restaurant.
Yeah, I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Sternquist?
Good evening, everyone. Um, just curious, when Scott, when they go into the back, for example, into the parking lot, they don't need to pay the encroachment fee?
That's correct. Encroachment permits are only required if they're using public land, so a sidewalk or something like that.
Okay, that's my only question.
Yeah, me and Mayor Chavez.
Look, I hit it by mistake, sorry. Uh, Mayor Protemu?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, two quick questions. Uh, first question is that the approval be done at a staff level by, by you, uh, Mr. Reimer?
Uh, that's correct.
And the second question is that when you approve such a permit, would there be a time limit attached to it?
Yeah, so the time limit is, um, related to the city's local state of emergency. So when the city's local state of emergency would end, then the permit would also be completed.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Um, the, um, this, the two submittals that we already received, did, were fees paid by those two applicants?
Um, yes.
So what fees did they have to pay?
Those fees, they paid the zoning clearance fee, which is $46.
Okay, those were the only fees they paid? Were those the only fees they paid then?
Yes, that's correct.
Um, are we gonna? What are the li, potential liability issues here, especially, uh, parking in, in private parking lots? And how are we going to handle, um, the use of parking lots if they've taken over handicap spaces and things like that? Or, are those things all going to be accounted for in the, uh, in the review of the application?
So there's, um, two things and, uh, maybe the city attorney's office could chime in if, if I haven't clarified everything. Um, one of the conditions of approval is a standard condition of approval that we put on all of our projects, which is that the applicant, um, is required to indemnify the city. Um, and then the second is that, um, whenever there's an encroachment permit, um, they are provided, they are required to provide insurance and they have to name the city as an additional insured on their insurance.
And Mr. Murphy, you're okay with those?
I'm okay with those and I, I would also say that in the, the other cities where I've seen this done and where I've, I've helped to set them up, um, if staff has a question, they certainly will work with the local fire department, with the sheriffs to make sure that, um, the way the outdoor dining is being set up is something that's still gonna allow for emergency access and that, uh, law enforcement and fire don't think is a problem. Uh, in some cities, as you know, they've closed, uh, entire blocks. They've closed lanes of streets. Uh, so there are a variety of things that can be done. Uh, and I know that what Mr. Reimers is, is looking for tonight is, is to set up that process. Um, each permit's gonna be different depending on what the applicant's seeking, but at, you know, some point we have to, um, trust in the judgment of, of the businesses to bring good applications to Mr. Reimers that he can approve. Uh, and if something seems to him that it's not gonna be safe enough, then, then as I say, you can go to fire, you can go to sheriffs and, and, uh, get additional input as he needs.
Hey, thank you. Uh, yeah, I don't know if anyone's driven down Colorado Boulevard lately, but, uh, they've taken this to a whole new level. They've, uh, they've actually taken the right-hand lanes, or the lanes closest to the curb and it put barriers up and changed the whole parking. And so it's, there's areas of Colorado Boulevard in Old Town and then east of Old Town where there's only one lane in each direction and they've basically set up the outdoor dining in the traffic lane. It doesn't appear that that's, uh, on the horizon with this, this thing. That's still something that would have to come under a different category, I believe.
Yes, at this point, we're only looking at, um, sidewalk dining. We haven't looked at, um, parklets or closing a lane of traffic.
It's just the sidewalks, the private walkways and then the private parking lots.
Yes, sir.
So if, if, uh, and I would imagine most of, or not most, but a lot of our parking lots are private. If the, if the owner of that lot does not agree, then that would prohibit that, uh, application entirely?
That's correct. They have to have the property owner's agreement, uh, in that case.
Okay. Okay, that's it for my question. So I'm gonna go ahead and open up public comment. I'll ask our city clerk if we have any, uh, email, public comment emails that we've received on this item?
Mayor, there are no email public comments.
Okay, and, uh, if you'll unmute the microphones, is there anybody out in the public who wishes to speak on this matter verbally?
Mayor?
Yes?
This is Franklin Riddell.
Okay, yes, Mr. Mayor.
I only had, I, I overheard that you said that there was a concern for the, um, handicap parking. Was that covered?
Yes, that, that will be, um, one of the items that staff will be looking at when there's a request for use of a parking lot.
Yeah. That was, that was the only item that, that I heard that I didn't, didn't seem to hear a reply, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else wish to comment on this matter from the public? Hearing none, I will close public comments and we will now move on to any final council questions and/or comments. And we'll begin, uh, this time with Councilmember Mann.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez. Uh, yeah, I, I do have a couple of questions. With respect to the conditions of approval, one of the items was limitations on hours of use. So if we maybe use the dive as an example, are the hours of operation for outdoor dining different than what they were originally allowed for indoor dining?
So the, the dive, uh, yes, the dive's indoor dining allowance was a late night allowance. I think it was past midnight. Um, but in speaking with the owner, uh, we agreed to limit the hours to 10:30 PM.
Okay, so I, I guess there's not much guidance on that. It's just kind of a discussion between the owner and, and us?
There's, um, the general guidance that's in the, the list of standard conditions is that the hours of dining should not exceed past 10:00 PM or the approved hours of operation whichever come first. In the case of, um, the dive, um, we modified that standard condition to 10:30, um, given that his location is so far from a residential area.
Okay, and, um, I, I have one more question. In the staff report, it said the, um, outdoor dining in, let's see, public right-of-way, uh, in the public parking lots behind the businesses is not recommended due to liability and safety issues. So how is that different than liability and safety issues within a private lot?
Uh, because on a private parking lot, um, this, the, the city wouldn't, does not own the property, so there would be less liability on the city in that instance. Uh, for the, for instance, for the properties that are on Lost Tunis, um, there's public parking behind and some of them have a public sidewalk behind those businesses because that, if they wanted to use that space, that would be city-owned and that would increase our liability.
So how, how's that different than them using a city-owned sidewalk?
The, that's a good question. The, the reason is because with the city-owned sidewalk, the city council had previously, um, had set up a series of rules for how sidewalk dining should be allowed along Lost Tunis on that sidewalk. And so that, because that wasn't the downtown specific plan, that was an idea of how to activate that area. Um, that was something that the council had previously said, well, let's move forward with that. The city engineer was more concerned about allowing that on the other side of the, those businesses, most specifically the public parking lots, because those public parking lots have curbs, um, and have other things that were not designed for, um, pedestrian usage and, um, usage for dining where the, the properties are more sloped. Um, and so there's more tripping and falling hazards and such.
Okay, thank, thank you. Um, I, I guess moving on to, uh, comments, um, there's one, one of the questions being asked is what's our take on fees? Um, I, I would be okay, uh, with us waiving the two fees that, uh, Mr. Reimers mentioned, the encroachment and the, um, in, entitlement fee of $46. Uh, I think anything we can do to help our businesses who would want to look at the possibility of expanding into outdoor dining, we should, uh, encourage them to, um, under the word guidance. Um, with respect to, with respect to the other recommendations within, um, private walkways and private parking lots, um, I concur with staff's recommendations and it seems like having one successful case with the dive, uh, lends itself some precedence as well, some experience for any other businesses that may want to entertain those possibilities. So I'm, I'm glad to see that we're, we're open to that. Um, but I, I would also suggest that if there were any other possible situations that would arise that's not covered by these specific categories, that should come up, that, um, council at least be made aware. Um, I know that, I guess contrary to what we might have initially thought, the interest and demand for expanding the outdoor dining may not have been as great as some other cities in our, in our neighborhood for a variety of reasons. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Sternquist, final comments, questions?
Um, I agree with Councilmember Mann that we should not, uh, should waive the fees. I do have, um, a question regarding the dive. Now, the dive is using, I believe it's the gathering place that's between Somi Somi and Summerall, correct?
Uh, if I remember the application correctly, there If I remember the application correctly, they're using a space to the south of the dive and to the east of the dive. So around the north side of the teapot and kind of between the teapot, dive and the Korean barbecue and the, the tea shop.
Right, so I didn't realize that it was near the teapot, but even if it was around the area of the teapot, that's pretty, it's pretty self-contained in that section. It's not really an example in my mind of like true outdoor dining that we think about on the sidewalk. Right? It's, it's, it's different in that aspect.
Right, it's, it's more of private, it's more dining on a private sidewalk or a private plaza.
Okay, so the Lotus House is, is that an encroachment into the sidewalk or is that a similar situation?
That one, they're looking at putting the parking, they're looking at putting the dining in the parking lot.
In the parking lot, okay. And then I know Councilmember Mann mentioned that we should be aware if there's any other situations and there is the outdoor dining at the crest and in, behind the parking lot adjacent to the alley. Now, what specifically is going on with that so that the council is aware?
In that case, we received a concern from one, from a resident. So we went and we notified the owner that they would need to apply for a permit. At this point, the owner hasn't applied for a permit and we plan on following up with the owner this week.
Okay, so when they file for the permit and hopefully they do, then they would, that would, they would not have to pay the 200 and some dollars, correct? Because that's in the parking lot. And then anyway, but we're going to waive those fees if we vote that way. So it would basically be that they need to, what, what's the process for them exactly? To come in and file, get, get a permit?
Yes, they would fill out the zoning clearance application form and then they would need to provide us an approval from the property owner and a plan that shows us where the dining is going to be, how many tables and chairs, whether there's going to be, that sort of stuff.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure that the process is as simple as possible. I mean, so we're just talking about a very basic diagram, correct? Nothing fancy, just showing where the tent will be and that's, and the tables and chairs?
Exactly, and we could even provide applicants with an aerial photograph of the space and then they could just draw it in with pencil. It's not anything sophisticated we need to know. And if we don't have all the information, we can just place conditions on it and then they could, if we agree to the conditions, we could move forward.
Okay, and at the crest, the requirement is that in order to serve drinks, they have to serve a meal. And who, who is doing that enforcement? Is that the county? Is that the city?
I'm not sure. I don't think the city has a conditional use permit on that location. My guess is that it might be a requirement from alcoholic beverage control.
Okay, I know.
Actually, man, it's, it's currently a requirement from the county health department. Public health has said that in order to operate, if something is considered a bar and/or restaurant, they have to be serving food in order to be served.
Okay, so can the, since the, the dive, I don't know if Lotus House serves alcohol, but since the dive and the crest serve alcohol and meals, would that be only to a certain time or can they continue to serve meals and alcohol until they close?
There was a condition, I'm sorry, really quick, let me look at the conditions. There's a requirement that the last alcoholic beverage can be served no later than one half an hour before closing. So they can serve beers, they can serve alcohol and food together up until a half an hour before they close and then they have to stop serving alcohol.
Okay, and, and what time does the dive close?
That I'm not sure about.
Okay, so those are my only questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Viscara, any further questions or comments?
The, what's the name of the other place, the flower pot?
The Lotus House?
Oh, Lotus House, I don't know, I got the flower pot. Is that considered public or private, the parking there?
That's considered private.
Okay, so they can pretty much do whatever. And I don't think that lot's been too busy anyway.
No, I think, yeah. I was just going to say that the trick there will really be making sure that they keep a good separation between the diners and the drive-through traffic. Because they're, they basically want to put the parking, the driveway and the dining area right next to each other. So grabbing a good fence and good protection there will be important.
Are we doing any kind of enforcement to ensure that whoever, whether there's a charge or not, whoever wants to, to have outdoor dining, have a permit?
We haven't, but we can if that's a priority for the council.
I was just thinking the safety concerns.
Yeah.
I thought it might not be a bad idea. And the other thing I noticed was, Cindy, what was the name of that ice cream place behind the dive?
That's Somi Somi.
I, I noticed they're serving outside when I went by there. And I'm sure, do, do they need a permit?
So that's, I'm, you know, you're catching me off guard there because whether they're preparing food outside and whether they're serving food outside are two different things. And whether they're eating outside is a different thing. This permit is really about eating outside. I'm not sure what the county health department's direction is on food service outside or even food, I'm sorry, food preparation.
Well, I didn't say any preparation, but they're eating out there and they're serving out there.
Okay, if they're eating outside and they have tables and chairs set up, then, then they definitely need to apply for the permit.
Okay.
And we can notify them of that.
Mayor?
Yeah. Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, Cindy.
Hello?
Can I just share, I just wanted to share that I did go to the crest for dinner outside. And I have to say, they were really doing a great job in following the county health order as far as, you know, not sharing of any like ketchup or mustard or any communal dishes. They had, everything was wrapped, forks, knife, salt, pepper. They were doing social distancing. There was a nice crowd. It was early. It was about, oh, I don't know, it was just a few days ago. I just needed to get out for a bit and thought I'd go and check it out. And it was just nice, I have to say. It was early. I didn't ask how long they stayed open, but everybody was in a good mood and just seemed to really enjoy themselves. So I thought if there was any way that, you know, we can encourage the other restaurants that maybe just haven't thought about doing it, that, you know, maybe they can do something similar. But I, I just wanted to share that because it was really a nice atmosphere. Everybody was having a nice time. It was a beautiful, beautiful evening after a really hot day. So whatever we need to do to help the people comply, if they feel that it's too difficult, an issue for them. I mean, I think maybe we should try a little bit harder to go out of our ways for them. I don't know. I think some people just think, oh, my gosh, I need to get a permit. I need to get a plot plan, maybe not really understanding that it's really something simple. Or if we can, like Scott suggested, do that for them, just when they come in or talk to them, just provide them with that as the first option so that they're not wondering what they need to go back and do. But just wanted to share that.
Sorry for the interruption, Councilmember Viscara. Did you have anything more you wanted to say?
Just, just my, my last point would be that, that I think we should waive the fees.
Thank you.
They seem an unnecessary burden on, on folks that are already having burdens. That's it.
Thank you. Mayor Protam, you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank the Mr. City Manager, Ms. Reimer and staff for putting this together. I think that they're doing what we expect them to do, which is to do all what they can to help the businesses. So this is one of the, one step towards the right direction. Definitely I'll be for waiving the fees. The only concern I have is even though in the staff report, it talks about the staff would be carefully reviewing, planning building, entering staff will carefully review the use of a site. But the only thing I'm more concerned would be if it's open late at night, I don't know how they're going to provide lighting. And I hope, and I agree with Councilmember Viscara, perhaps we should go back and look at them to see if there'd be courts and extension court lights and that kind of thing draping all over the place. They, because if it's truly outdoor dining, they need to provide some kind of lighting. So that is a bit of a concern for me. So, but if, if that's taken care of, I certainly can support this proposal here.
Thank, thank you. All right, just real brief, have we, have we, have we run this by JPIA as far as liability issues?
Uh, no.
Should we?
I don't.
I can tell you, I can tell you this, once we start allowing things to happen, yes, we will have indemnity clauses. Yes, I hope that the private parking lot owners will have sufficient insurance. But I can guarantee you that we will be sued if something happens. There is no question in my mind. And so we need to find out, one, do we have coverage for this? And how is that going to work? I've seen these, I mean, once a city starts changing rules and doing things differently, it creates a different environment. I'm not saying that they're going to win a lawsuit, but certainly we are a potential defendant. There's no question about that. I would just feel more comfortable if we have at least, I'm not going to say, and JPIA isn't going to give us any guarantees or anything of that sort, but at least we should at least have some type of, of communication with them as to any potential issues and also maybe any suggestions they may have regarding liabilities. Since they are our liability coverage, you know, issuer, so.
Mr. Cook? I, I don't think that would be a problem, Mr. Mayor. I, I know several cities within the JPIA pool that are doing this kind of work and I, I know of at least one that has a very conservative city manager. So I know that they must have run it past JPIA. And I don't think it will slow the overall rollout of the program down. I think Scott would, would be able to get that done rather quickly.
Sure, yeah, Maria will, will, will be, I can contact her tomorrow and let her know. And I'm sure she already has the answer, because this is not, we're not reinventing the wheel here, so. You know, I hate to sound like a broken record, but you know, years ago, we decided that if we're going to pay the premiums we do to JPIA, we should take advantage of that. And that is to run these types of things by them just to make sure that, you know, there may be something we didn't think about when it comes to the use of private parking lots and things like that. So I think it's a great idea. I concur with my fellow council members. I think, you know, we need to be as business-friendly as we can at this time. I have no problem with waiving the fees. I do need, I do, however, I want to say that we do need to at least have some order. We need to have some control. So we need to make sure that those people who want to take advantage of this at least follow the rules and come in and get the information. It doesn't sound like it's that, that difficult to do. It's a matter of filling out a form and I'm sure our staff will be ready to help them as much as they can to make sure they get through that. And so I think that that's the very least that we can, we can do. And hopefully that'll of course help with their, their businesses and, and keep, keep them in business as well. So, okay, anything further? If not, I will go ahead and entertain a motion on this matter. Somebody would like to make that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'll move that staff use the zoning clearance antagreement and procedure for approval of the outdoor dining and waive the fees for encroachment and also the application fee. And also direct staff to check with JPIA for their recommendations as well.
A second?
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. If there's, if there is no objection, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes. Yes.
Last Peggy. Peggy, we lost you.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protam, you?
Yep.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes, okay, that passes unanimously. Wouldn't it be nice when we don't have to go through all this at some point? And we can meet again in person and speak and move things along, boy. Oh, it's the best, it's the best we have so far, so. All right, now we will move on to item B, temporary banner permits. And again, I believe we'll be turning that over to Development Director Reimers as well, so go ahead.
Yes, good evening, Mayor again and City Council again. Tonight, we wanted to bring to you an item regarding the banner permits. This is actually a result of the economic recovery plan that you reviewed a few months ago. In this, we wanted to note that our businesses do have an urgent need to communicate messages to their customers. And in that urgency, putting up a banner is probably one of the quickest way for them to put up a new message, whether it's that they have, that they're still open or whether they have the ability to pick up food or drop off service, something that they need to put out there quickly. And so staff's recommendation here is to waive the banner permit fee, which is $30. Under the zoning code, there are some provisions related to banners. The one thing we wanted council to also look at was waiving the requirement, some of the timing requirements. So right now, under the banner code, people can display a banner for no more than 30 consecutive days and it has to be taken down for 60 days. And then in total, they can only have it up for 120 calendar days. And so what staff is looking for is the approval to allow people to have these banners up for at least six months or until the end of the local state of emergency, whichever comes first. Just for a matter of perspective, the city has issued five temporary banner permits this year. On an average year, we approve about 10. The permit fee is $30. The, right now, there's only been one application submitted since we had a local declared state of emergency. So with that, staff is recommending that the council waive the fees for temporary banner permits while the city is in a local state of emergency and direct staff to allow businesses to keep their banners up for a period of six months or until the end of that local state of emergency, whichever comes first. With that, I'm available if you have questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Mann, any questions?
Yeah, just one quick question. I guess this could have pertained to the previous item too. But when, when we talk about the end of the local state of emergency, is there any potential conflict with a county or state-issued level of emergency? That, is there a potential conflict between those two?
Councilmember Mann, I don't believe so at this point in time, but if that starts to become a conflicting issue, we would bring that to the council generally anyways. So once that time comes, we will, we will.
So, um, once that time comes, we will, we will present that to you. But the way Mr. Reimers is presented, I think it's consistent with what we're kind of doing so far and don't see any conflicts, at least at this point.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
If there's anything we can be sure of, and that's is a conflict between state, local, and federal governments in our world today, unfortunately. Okay, um, so let's, uh, move on to Councilmember Sternquist for any questions, please.
I don't have any, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Viscara, any questions?
Just for clarity, when we say banners, are we talking about the, 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 the ones that they put up in, on the front of the business? When I first saw that, I thought of banners across the street, but we're not talking about that.
No, we're not talking about the banners that hang over the streets, just the ones that hang on the business.
Okay, that's all I have.
Yeah, good question. I was gonna ask the same one myself, so. Okay, uh, Count, uh, Mayor Potem, you? Any questions?
Um, just a follow-up to Councilmember Viscara's question. So, uh, these banners would not be in public, uh, right away? Um, would me, would not be encroaching the public right away?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, thank you. Um, so I'm looking at your report and it gives, um, refers to section nine, one F dash twelve of zoning, um, for the regulations related to banners. And so we already know that you're asking for one of those to be relaxed. Are there any others that are going to be asked to be relaxed at this point? Looks like it's the thirty days, thirty consecutive days we're being asked to, to waive that, uh, correct?
Uh, yes, that, that is correct.
All right, what about any of the other ones?
And yeah, just to be clear, the, um, if someone has had a banner up for, let's say already up for forty-five days and they want to keep it up for six months now, that a hundred and twenty day per calendar year, uh, would come into effect. And we would just want to set that aside as well.
Right, so, so really that, that last bullet point is, is basically being asked to be discontinued for the time being, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, but, but all the other ones are going to still stay in effect, uh, one banner per tenant, uh, on private property in good condition, has to be on a wall or a fence and cannot exceed fifteen feet in length and three feet in height. So those are all gonna remain in effect tonight, eh, no matter what we do tonight, correct?
Yes, sir.
Unless we decide to change those, of course.
Yes.
Okay. The reason I ask is that I, I've seen that many different types of banners around town is you drive around and, uh, it appears that there are many of them that are, exceed the three feet, three feet in height, uh. Uh, and I don't know if, uh, how we're looking at that or whether we will or not, but, uh, uh, does that mean that if, uh, an existing banner is up that doesn't meet these requirements, uh, we will have to get with that owner to either bring it in compliance? Or how would we handle something like that?
Yeah, so, um, we, we have been kind of waiting on code enforcement going out and doing a sweep on banners because we wanted to get direction from council on this rule and on the waiving of the fees. Uh, as soon as we have direction from council on that, then we will go around and notify the businesses that they can apply for banner permit, that there are better rules available to them. Uh, but they do need to come into compliance if the banner is, is not in the correct size. They, or if they have too many banners up, they will need to come into compliance with those other requirements.
Okay, um, that's all the questions I have. So why don't I go ahead and open up public comment? I will begin by asking the city clerk if there are any email requests, uh, regarding this banner.
No, Mayor, there are no email requests for public comment.
And if you'll unmute the microphones for those who are listening in, is there anyone who is listening to the meeting? Uh, does anybody wish to comment on this matter? Hearing none, I will close public comment. And I will finish with council questions or comments on this banner. We'll begin again with Councilmember Mann.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I just had one more, uh, question. So banners, we're defining banners as anything that's handing, hanging on the exterior, right? So if, if someone had something inside the store that was, that can be seen from the outside via the window, how would we classify that?
Uh, I believe the sign code requires a sign, eh, for a sign not to be included within the sign code, it has to be five feet from the window face. Um, uh, often, often businesses try to get around the sign code by putting a sign right in front of the window. Um, but, uh, so cities have caught on to that and now require a separation of five feet between the sign and the, and the window.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and, uh, eh, in terms of, uh, comments, uh, I'm, I'm in agreement with, uh, what's being proposed. Um, I think it makes sense. I, I, I do like the change uh, with respect to how long they can leave the signs up for. Cause if we followed the existing zoning code, um, that probably doesn't fit in with the current situation. And I'm also in favor of, uh, waiving the temporary sign permit.
Thank, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Sternquist, any final comments?
Um, no, I concur with Councilmember Mann.
Thank you. Councilmember Viscara, any final comments?
No comments. I think, uh, Councilmember Mann said it all.
Okay, Council, uh, Mayor Potem, you?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first of all, I must say that I appreciate what staff has done uh, in looking at the business permits and see that, um, certain permits, uh, were not being taken out and, and tried to devise, um, um, a strategy to deal with it in order to encourage, uh, business activities. And, and I encourage, um, we keep looking further at building permits and other permits that we would, we would routinely issue and see if there are ways that we can help stimulate, uh, stimulate, um, uh, the business activities. Uh, but I am very appreciative of what, what staff has done. And I concur with what's been said. And I am okay in waiving the fees for, for the permit. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank, thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Chavez?
Yes.
One more quick thing too. We, staff has been working on, uh, some branding issues too related to banners. And one of the things we're doing is we're developing, uh, banners that have the city logo and we're open for business, that kind of thing too. So we'll be able to offer that, uh, al- along the guidelines that you've discussed tonight, offer that to businesses as well. So that if there's a, if they don't have their own branding or they don't have anything else, we can offer that, we can offer that banner to them.
Thank you.
Is that a freebie?
Uh, we could, it, we could, we, we could offer it as a freebie or we could offer it as, eh, eh, a cost, one or the other. It's about fifty dollars a banner.
Okay, thank you. Um, only comment I have is that, uh, you know, I've always believed that, uh, any rule, any ordinance is only as good as the enforcement of that ruler ordinance. Uh, my private observations in driving around town is that we're all over the place with this issue. And, um, it would be nice to have some, some continuity, some uniformity, uniformity to, to this. And, uh, I hope that this will lend itself a little bit better to that. Um, I agree with the recommendations. But again, um, uh, there seemed to be a lot of, uh, and, and, and I say this not, not to blame the businesses because it change, seems like the rules that we get from the state and the county seem to change every other day. And what you put on a banner today may not be good tomorrow. And that's the, that's the problem. But, uh, you know, we need to apply this equally to, I think, everyone so that we are not showing any favoritisms. And, um, so if we say we're going to limit it the size, if we say we're going to make sure that, uh, it states correctly the, the current, uh, status of the law, then of course we need to, to follow up on that, I think. And, uh, just to make sure. And I think that's, that's just a matter of fairness to everybody. I, I wouldn't want one business say, come to us and say, well, how come that guy's banner is up there? And why does he get to say that and I don't? So I think we need to, to apply it uniformly, so. Okay, so other than that, uh, I will go ahead and entertain a motion? Anyone?
Uh, Mayor, I'll, I'll make a motion to waive fees for the temporary ban- banner permits while the city is in a local state of emergency and to direct staff to allow businesses to keep banners up for a period of six months or until the end of the local state of emergency, whichever comes first.
Did we include, uh, the city manager's proposal also with that? About providing banners?
No, that, that's not before us today.
I think that's a separate issue, right?
That's a separate issue that is not before us. Okay, we have a, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Okay.
I guess.
Hey, we have a second? Um, unless there's any objection, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Potem?
Yeah.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Hey, good. So that will conclude our business on item ten. So, uh, at this time, we're gonna go back to item nine, our unfinished business. However, before we start this item, I believe Councilmember Sternquist, uh, will, will, uh, recuse herself. Uh, so Councilmember Sternquist, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to recuse myself from this item as I own real property within five hundred feet of the proposed, um, I guess it's not proposed, right, but of the project.
Okay.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
All right, all right, thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you.
Good evening.
All right, back here. So we're now going to move to item nine, unfinished business. And our first item under that is the Primrose Park Status Update. And so, uh, uh, Brian, are you gonna begin with that? And then we're gonna have a presentation or how are we gonna work that?
Yes, actually, Mr. Matsumoto and Dwayne from, uh, David Volson Associates are here. Uh, Mr. Matsumoto will, uh, provide the presentation. This was, uh, again, we've been working with the Standing Committee as well, uh, through this process and did additional update. And subsequently, the following item that you'll be seeing as well. We're very proud of the progress that we've, uh, achieved so far, um, bringing in, uh, the expertise of, of, of a- all matters from council, from the, from staff, from the architects and everybody else is really bringing this along. And I'll let Mr. Matsumoto go through very briefly kind of where we're at and we're ready to go out to bid. So, um, and with that, I'll, I'll leave it to Mr. Matsumoto.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, uh, City Manager Cook. Uh, good evening again, uh, Mayor Chavez and members of the City Council. Uh, City Clerk, well, if you don't mind, can you, um, allow me to share my screen so I can show the presentation? And then we can get started. Great, thank you so much. Okay, can I confirm that everybody is able to see the PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, no?
Fantastic. So, thank you again, uh, City Council. We have a status update for Primrose Park. Uh, we are going to be covering a few items, uh, for this agenda, uh, staff report. Um, I do want to mention we have, uh, our David Volts Design, uh, Project Manager, Dwayne Tutte, uh, who will be taking over the second portion of the presentation. And he'll be going over the review of the park design concepts. Uh, first, uh, we wanted to provide you with an update on the timeline. Um, currently, we are, uh, working with David Volts Design to complete the design preparation and then the plan specs and estimate package. Uh, we're doing that this month. Uh, we're looking at going out and having City Council approve and authorize our bid package in September. Uh, once that bid package has been authorized, we're looking at awarding the contract, uh, in October of this year. And then as long as we don't hit any delays, uh, breaking ground, uh, December of 2020 before the end of the current year, uh, we will be, uh, planning on having construction, uh, go through the first half of 2021, what they anticipated, a grand opening of the park in September of 2021. And hopefully we're at a little different point in our, uh, current climate where we're able to come together and, and celebrate this brand new park in Temple City. Uh, the next slide I have is our project updates. Uh, the city met with the state to go over the mandatory grant administration workshop. Uh, we were notified by the state that, uh, the performance period for our grant, the Prop sixty-eight grant has now been extended two years. Uh, the performance deadline is now June twenty-fourth. Uh, but as the council has seen in the last slide, uh, we are still working on our original timeframe. And we are hoping to have this project finalized in 2021. So we do not anticipate needing those extra two years, uh, that the state is providing. Uh, the city is also currently, uh, filing a deed restriction that will enable the city to begin our grant reimbursement requests. Uh, this is important for us because, uh, it'll allow the city to, uh, be reimbursed for, uh, the project as we spend the money. Uh, and, uh, there isn't a restriction on, on the amount of, uh, reimbursement we can seek. So, uh, that's something that, um, you know, is a great asset for the city to, uh, to be able to do that. Um, we also, during the grand workshop meeting, uh, received confirmation that, uh, we will be able to include the parkway and sidewalk improvements along Primrose Avenue as part of this grant. Um, originally in the workshop, the state had mentioned that the grant monies could only be used on the parcel properties. Um, and it wouldn't include street, uh, repairs. But we did clarify that as part of this project, we were gonna be doing some parkway and sidewalk improvements. And that will be covered under the, the state grant. And then finally, um, the city is exploring some alternate sources of funding, just in case. Um, we do, uh, we do think that the, uh, full two point nine million dollar grant amount will cover, uh, in full the project. Uh, but we are doing our due diligence by reckon, uh, being able to recognize some other, um, uh, funding, uh, resources avenues, uh, just in case. Um, and one of those would be Measure W. Um, I do have another funding source, uh, which will be in the next slide. So, uh, city staff met with the, um, uh, Standing Committee. So that's the Standing Committee on Facilities, uh, Public Works and Infrastructure, uh, last week. And we had a couple of items that we had discussed. Um, one of the things that the Standing Committee had brought up was uh, potentially upgrading to a Level Three electric vehicle charger. Uh, this is called a DC fast charge. So we did some preliminary investigation. And, um, there is a significant cost increase, uh, moving up to a Level Three charger. Um, and also a, a infrastructure, um, uh, increased need as well. Um, one other thing with the Level Three chargers is that they are not universally compatible with all electric vehicles. Um, so the city is recommending to continue, um, as proposed with a Level Two charger, uh, for electric vehicles, which is compatible for um, all electric vehicles as well as, um, not needing any additional electrical infrastructure upgrades, uh, to achieve having those two on site. Uh, the Diddy, the city did investigate, um, and the city has roughly ninety thousand and eight QMB funds. And what we could do is potentially add two additional Level Two chargers to the project. Uh, right now, we're going over the costs with DVD to see if that's something that's feasible within that ninety thousand dollar, um, allotment from a QMB. Um, at this meeting, the Standing Committee meeting, we also explored, uh, we will be exploring if there is need for additional, uh, fire suppression infrastructure. So that would be a fire hydrant, um, uh, as part of the site, um, if, if it doesn't currently meet code. Uh, we had scheduled a site visit with DVD, uh, last week on July thirtieth. And then, uh, one other, um, another item was that the staff had explored alternative options for the fabric shade sale for the playground area. Um, could, the Standing Committee expressed concerns, um, about the durability of the material. Uh, but going over with DVD, But going over with DVD, the fabric shade material is probably the most ideal option from a cost standpoint. And there's some areas that DVD is going to mitigate some of the concerns of vandalism by by making sure that the sales are high enough to prevent people from potentially grabbing onto or cutting into those fabric shade sales. And then, finally, at the end of the presentation, we can talk about setting a meeting date for the Arg Ad Hoc Committee, which would consist of Mayor Protem, you, and Councilmember Viscara. But we'll wait till the end of the presentation to discuss that portion of it. And then, finally, for my end, we just wanted to provide some additional design updates, so. The DVD was provided from the last City Council meeting to add the custom restroom in a storage building, incorporate mid-century design elements, and then those two Level Two charge stations for vehicles. Staff provided recommendations to DVD for our trees and plant materials, irrigation, playground manufacturer, park furnishings, and then the specs for the mid-century design elements. And then, finally, we just wanted to provide an update regarding some existing trees that exist at the property. The trees that are currently on the property that we will be able to retain are the Don Redwood trees, and that's at the northwest corner of the current property. There are two or three in total parkway trees that are going to need to be removed along Primrose. One of those is a eucalyptus tree, which is compromised. We had West Coast Arbor do an assessment on that. And based on their assessment, that's something that would need to be removed anyways. And then there's two magnolia trees that fall within the current proposed driveway for the new park design that are going to need to be removed. We do want to note, though, that with those removals of those trees, the entire park project itself will have many more trees planted than what's being removed. I can pause at this moment right now for the for Mayor Chavez and for the City Council, if you have any questions regarding this section, or if not, we can wait until the end of the presentation. But it's your preference, Mayor Chavez, how you would like to to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Adam. Are there any questions from council up to this point? Okay, hearing none, why don't you go ahead and continue on?
All right. So what I'll do is I'll hand it over to our DVD Project Manager, Dwayne Tutte. And he's going to go over some of our park design elements.
Good evening, everybody. I hope you can all hear me well. Had a little bit of trouble last time. So this is our master plan for Primrose Park.
Wayne, we we can barely hear you. Maybe you have to get closer to your mic.
Sorry about that. I thought we had fixed that from last time.
Still, no, still pretty bad. Is it on our end or your end?
I think it probably is on our end. I apologize for that. Yeah. Hopefully, you can still hear me a little bit better at all.
We can hear you a little bit better, but now we just see your nose. No, I'm just kidding.
All right.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
The design package we had presented to the city's Standing Committee, I think about a week ago or so. And this is some some of the updates that we had shown. So we can walk through the plan if you like. Some of the additions were removing of the trees that were on the parkway and also adding a monument sign. And then also clarifying on the restroom, the single restroom. I think if we move forward, we're going to discuss the different materials. So to start, here's the flatwork presentation of the different types of paving materials we're going to be using on site. So for the parking lot, typical asphalt, concrete driveways, regular decorative concrete paving that's going to be primarily used around the site with different finishes and scoring. There's going to be a track root block that's going to be rubberized, that's going to be a little bit more denser than the playground so that it can have a little more resiliency for people walking. Playground itself is going to be a rubberized surface that can allow for fall zones for play equipment. Enhanced paving at the main entry as also where there's going to be a picnic area and water feature. And we're going to have decorative stone throughout the site to enhance the planting palette that we're proposing. Next will be perimeter fence and gates. We have the main entry gateway that's going to be in the center of the park from the parking lot. There, it's going to be used the brick that is mimicking City Hall as well as the parking lot on Orcman. And I believe it was Last Tunis. We're also going to propose a breeze block wall mimicking the mid-century modern look. And we're also going to have a slatted gate that's going to also mimic that same era. We have a single entry gate that's coming off of Primrose that's just going to have two walls that are frame the doorway. And on either side, we're going to have a decorative fence with panels that's going to utilize a block wall below and also a picket fence to deter people from coming in and also see allow for security to see through. The panels themselves are going to be of a pattern that is mimicking the mid-century look, and we hope that it could be a color that can attract people to the site and be welcoming. For our shade structures, mentioned, we have, once again, decorative panels at the picnic area. Also panels at the small lawn area for for gathering. And then we have a shade structure at the playground, and that's going to have no center posts, but just allow for enough shade to cover the play areas. And then we have a planting pallet that's going to mimic what the city had sent us, as well as what's at City Hall currently with a lot of drought tolerant plants and and succulents. This is our restroom that we're proposing. It's going to be a single occupancy restroom with adjacent storage. And that's where we'll have equipment for controllers and electrical. Any questions?
Okay, thank you very much for that presentation. So we'll start with questions. Councilmember Mann, any questions?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Viscara, any questions?
No questions.
Okay, Mayor Protem, you?
No questions. The one thing that the Standing Committee did discuss and perhaps not mention tonight was we suggested the designer look into a low-impact development, a bow swill kind of setup at the southeast corner of the parking lot. So at least that's we suggesting that for the designer to look at.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, I will open up public comment at this time. I'll begin by asking our city clerk if there are any public comment emails on this item?
No, Mayor, there are no public comment emails.
Okay, and for those who are online, we'll unmute your microphones. Anybody who is listening in, are there any comments on this item? Hearing none, I will close public comment, and we will end by asking any final council questions or comments. Councilmember Mann?
So thank you, Mayor Chavez. Yeah, I just want to say that we've come a long way on this project, and we have a pretty great team between not just DVD, but also our parks and rec staff and and multiple meetings with the Standing Committee on this item. We've been able to kind of iron out a lot of the finer details. And I think one of the nice things that came out from some of our meetings was actually the the schedule. I think initially, we had some issues with how the schedule was being outlined for this project, but if I heard Mr. Matsumoto correctly, we very well could have a park towards the end of next year if everything goes smoothly. And and I I do want to echo his his comments on, hopefully, you know, the pandemic situation would be different and that we'd be able to actually celebrate a new park together, since this is going to be the first park that we we build since the incorporation of the city. And and I do want to thank Mayor Protem Yu for bringing up the the low-impact development comments. I know in the staff report, there's mention of Measure W funds that could potentially be used specifically for those measures. So while it might not sound like a lot, but in the broader scheme of things, a lot of new infrastructure is requires, either requires these types of low-impact developments. And we, as a city, can also say that as part of the construction of park, there are some water quality and environmentally friendly aspects to the parking lot portion of the construction. So I just want to express my thanks and appreciation for the entire team for chugging along. And of course, I'll end by just reiterating that this wouldn't be possible if we hadn't applied and obtained the the grant that pretty much covers the cost for for this for this great project. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Viscara, any final comments?
Not really. I I do congratulate the team on the work done. I'm I'm impressed, and I'm glad that it went forward. So good work.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem Yu?
Yeah, I echo what's been said. I'm very excited about the project and great work being done by Mr. Matsumoto, staff, and then the designer. Thank you to Dave and Dwayne for for good design. I think we're going to find that that what this park has done is a very, very condensed jewel of a park, so I'm looking forward to seeing it open. But also looking forward to working with Councilmember Viscara on the public art. I think actually, the the architects have the defined a fair possible location for us to look at already, so I'm looking forward to working on that.
Thank you. Well, I concur with everyone. Excited about getting started on this project and look forward to its to its finalization, and hopefully, we can all celebrate at the park. So we'll keep our fingers crossed. So thank you. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we receive a filed staff report.
A second.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, we got a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, we will now move on to a related item. That's item B. Additional scope of services and fees for professional services agreement with David Holt's design for the Primrose Park project. Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor Chavez, and members of the council before you tonight. As we've been working through this project, there are additional costs that needed to be incurred related to some of the design work reasonably within the cost of what you would expect for a project this size. But with that, I'll let Mr. Matsumoto go through the presentation and explain some of that to you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. I have a short presentation for the City Council going over the request by DVD for a scope of service and fees increase. We'll provide an overview, the three sections for add-ons, and then the Standing Committee recommendation. Facilities, Public Works and Infrastructure Standing Committee did review this item as well at their their most recent meeting. So just an overview, David Holt's Design is requesting an increase, not only in the scope of services of the agreement, but also in fees for the Primrose Park project. The total requested amount is $56,000. The original amount of that agreement was roughly $139,000. So we, in total, if approved, that scope of service fee would be $195,000. We did confirm with DVD that barring any unforeseen circumstances, that this amount, this total professional services agreement amount would carry us through the project. So we wouldn't anticipate any additional increases other than what's being requested this evening. Section A for that increase is an add-on for services rendered of $12,000. This is additional work that's been rendered already for working DVD, working with the Standing Committee and city staff, redoing some design concept refinement, and then providing presentation assistance at our Standing Committee and council meetings. Section B is an add-on of additional amenities and design. This portion is roughly $37,000, and it includes additional work for construction drawings that include the new restroom and storage facility, which was an add-on to the project, as well as some additional add-ons that were required by the state that weren't originally specked out in the scope of the project. So that would be the building of the EV charge stations, more shade. And then really, with the $2.9 million grant that we received is allowing DVD to really fully explore the different design elements to to really make this a unique park. That's really our first park that that the city is going to be able to build and really make it a special place for the community to come together and gather. Finally, is $6,500, which would be add-on construction period services. So this allows for three architectural reviews, you know, during that during that timeframe. The Standing Committee did review this, and the city went back and and gathered some additional information based off of that meeting. So the current proposal of in total $195,000 for the professional services agreement represents about 8.9% of the construction costs. Typically, architecture and design costs for a project fall between eight to 10%. As an example, Aldi County Architecture and Engineering fees fall within this this industry standard. Because of this, the Standing Committee, as long as staff recommendations would be to City Council to approve that $56,000 increase, which we feel is a very reasonable ask, given the scope of the project and the amount that we have secured through the state Prop 68 grant. And that would conclude my report unless the council has any further questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Mann, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Viscara?
No questions.
Mayor Protem Yu?
No questions. Thank you.
I just had a couple of questions on these additional fees. I'm going to figure out how these how these amounts were arrived at, because I'm reading it correctly. The first request is for the $12,200. You have $12,000 on your screen, but on on our report, it says $12,200. Is that a typo or?
It's a typo on my presentation. I apologize. It's $12,200. And calculated based off of 52 hours of additional staff time.
So that works out to about $234 an hour. And then you go down, and it says park design added time 80 hours for $13,000. And that that's roughly $162 an hour. And then we've got construction period services for $6,500 at 30 hours. That comes out to 216. So is it? I mean, it seems to me that we're all over the place here. How do how do those figures, how were these arrived at? Are they based on, I'm assuming that based on, I I'm assuming that uh there's more expertise maybe involved with the first uh fifty-two hours maybe than the next uh eighty hours or? I mean, I I doesn't seem to have any rhyme or reason to it.
Sure, um, there there was, so for the first part, um, section A, we actually had the lead uh uh, design architect, David Bolts, actually sit in and and be a part of those meetings, but I know we have Dwayne on board as well that can provide more detail than I can regarding um, the the hourly rates, because as you had mentioned, uh, Mayor Chavez, there are some discrepancies in terms of the per hour rate. So, um, Dwayne, do you mind um providing some feedback at least from uh DVD's uh perspective?
Sure, um, as you saw the different rates, uh, more senior staff and licensed landscape architects uh can uh command a higher fee uh based on their licensure and and their liability.
That's sort of like uh partners and associates in a law firm, so. I guess we want, we want the associates working on this more than we do the partners, apparently.
Correct.
And we save a few bucks there.
Yeah, that's what I'm stepping in, so um you get the expertise without such the the big um fee upfront, so I can do all that.
Alright, fair enough. Okay, so I just, it just that it was just seemed like it was just different different breakdowns and and I I guess it it sounds like staff has has done their due diligence and have looked at it. The fees seem to be reasonable and 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 the larger scope of things, so I don't wanna nickel and dime it, but it just uh, it was just hard to figure out the different amounts and the different times and stuff, but but I'm I'm assuming they're just different people working on it and different different things, so.
You got it, but we can follow up with our fee schedule just so that you're very clear on where those um costs came into.
Well, I just I just think maybe out of uh transparency, maybe we just uh, I I don't know, maybe when we get the bill or we'll, it'll be broke down maybe a little bit better, but it just seems to be kind of very general right now. Okay, great. Um, alright, so I will then uh open up public comments, uh. If uh, I'll ask our our city clerk if there are any public comment emails.
No, Mayor, there are no public comment emails.
Okay, and if anyone is on the line, uh, if you wish to speak on this item, please do so at this time. Okay, hearing none, I will close public comments. Any final comments from anyone on council? Councilmember Mann?
Well, thank you. Um, I'll just, I'll just say that um i- in our role as a standing committee, um, we've seen the work that they've done so far and understand that uh, given how this project has developed over time and the scope necessary to bring this to uh full construction, um, that the additional fees and services that are requested is in lines with um with what we expect from from this project. So, so I appreciate the uh presentation to kind of break it down and and I concur with with you, Mayor, um, that in in the interest of transparency, I think it's uh, the questions are worthwhile to kind of, you know, figure out exactly where where the origins of these fees are and how it's all broken down uh for the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Viscara, any final comments?
No final comments.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Protemiu?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just wanna say that if you if you're so thankful that uh, we actually do have the grant money and every time I look at the project, I just uh uh, very happy to to see we're in this position. And like uh Mr. Matsumoto was saying, that the reason why there's more design work is because we can now afford a lot of the additional amenities such as the restrooms and higher level of design and so forth. And um, so um, I'm just happy to see the project moving forward.
Hey, thank you. Thank you uh to uh to you and Councilmember Mann for your work on this project as well. Um, it's always nice when we can get others to pay for things and and it seems that we're putting that to good use in this project, so. I also don't think I've ever seen a construction project that has ever not been changed at one point or another, but uh uh certainly something to be expected, but within reason. So thank you for that. And uh, so I think we're ready for a motion.
Oh, Mayor Chavez? Alright, go go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve the additional services request from David Bolt's design and approve the First Amendment to Services Agreement between the city and David Bolt's design.
No second?
Great, we have a motion and a second. If there is no objection, uh, Madam Clerk, if you please take roll call.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protemiu?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, great. So now we will move on to item eleven, update from our city manager. And uh, before we do that, again, I wanna thank Dwayne for for bringing, for coming this evening and next time, get your microphone fixed, will you? I'm just kidding. Go ahead and bill us, we'll pay for it. Uh, no, I'm just kidding. Alright, thank you very much. Okay, city manager, Cook?
Mayor Chavez, members of the council, just a couple of things tonight. Um, last yesterday, the Board of Supervisors actually approved additional funding for rental assistance. Um, staff took a brief look at that and tried to look and see if that was the additional funding for, for example, our rental program that we, that the council authorized recently. At this point, it does not seem as though there there'll be additional direct allocations from the appropriation that the board made yesterday to the uh LA County uh Community Development Commission. Um, but we will keep an eye out for that, making sure that that's not, you know, and if additional funds flow through our CDBG program to us, we will make sure that we let you know about that and bring that up, so. Um, there, you may have seen that in the news. Um, rental checks have been going out to landlords to assist um this week uh with our rental assistance program. And in the next couple of weeks, a business assistance check should be hitting some businesses relatively soon, so we'll keep you updated, but they think there was about ten this week and a few more. Um, we're going through another list of rental assistance applications as well. For those who either dropped out, didn't qualify, we're going to the next list after that, and we'll go to a following list after that as well. Uh, I have to thank our staff, um, Adam, Eliana, Ashley, uh Scott, have done an amazing job of, we we usually don't do these types of things. They usually, it's usually entitlement cities that do this type of work. And um, they've rolled up their sleeves, working as a team and gotten that out and we're making sure we're doing our due diligence with the project and getting checks out the door, so. Uh, thanks to them. Uh, lastly, uh, Councilmember uh uh, this, um, I'm sorry, Councilmember Sternquist had asked me um, saw an article related to West Covina and the issuance of what are called pension obligation bonds. That can be a long discussion, um, and maybe not a very exciting discussion, but a long discussion. Um, bottom line is uh GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association usually does not uh recommend issuing pension obligation bonds. I say that, but at the same time, individual agencies may have very compelling and real reasons to issue pension obligation bonds. What a pension obligation bond is, is you take what is your unfunded liability that you owe to, in our case, to PERS. And you pay that with a nu- with another pi- piece of debt that is a lower rate than what you pay PERS now. A PERS about seven percent, some agencies are issuing pension obligation bonds at around three, three and a half percent. So the differential between what you're paying PERS on your unfunded liability and what you would pay the debt service to pay that unfunded liability is kind of the nexus or the delta between the two. The idea is to either stabilize over a long period of time, what that rate would be and what your contribution would be, or in some cases, just find some savings. It is a form of paying using another form of debt to pay your debt that you owe. Um, but it is also debt that's owed over a thirty year, uh, excuse me, now a twenty year period of time. Uh, according to the new cow PERS amortization schedule. So, um, we always look at options as staff for you as council to evaluate. Uh, but also too, I would say in general, most cities that issue pension obligation bonds are usually cities that are in some level of financial distress. And they truly need that funding there. So, we are not in a city that's, we are, we um, we are not in a city that would call in financial distress. Um, but I I that has become out, that has been out there and in the public, but I so I wanted to mention that to you, and if there's any other follow-up questions that you have, or I'm happy to answer those at a uh individually, or if that's something you wanna bring up at a different time, I'm happy to give a better full uh full presentation related to that issue. Um, things are going well with our appointments. Um, they are slowed down significantly. Um, but people are getting their appointments in uh with our staggered schedule and everything that we're doing to keep both the employees and uh the public safe during this COVID event. Our online portals and uh are working very robustly and people are gravitating towards those uh significantly, and um we've actually seen a downward trend in the amount of appointments we're, we've been seeing week after week. Uh, and I think we've reached kind of like a stabilization point there that we're able to accommodate the public, so. Uh, that's it, that is it for uh my presentation today, Mayor Chavez.
Thank you. Okay, item twelve update from our city attorney. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually have four items for you tonight. Um uh, first, the county eviction moratorium, the county had has tabled that until September. Uh, as you know, the uh item in front of them, uh, item under consideration, as we talked about last week is whether to make their war brand the baseline for incorporated cities. They now will not be taking action on that until the the start of September, so we'll keep an eye on it when it, when it does come back. Uh, second item.
Is that, is that the one that we wrote the letter on that?
Yes, sir.
Partner's office? So after all of that, they decided to just table it?
And I can't tell you why. Uh, I don't know, don't know whether it had to do with the uh responses that they were getting, whether they wanted more time to look at it, but we we do know that it was pushed back.
Yeah, well, okay, thank you.
Uh, the second item, I know this had come up earlier in the pandemic, um. One of the council members noted that uh the city of Los Angeles had put a cap on food service delivery fees. Uh, at the time, uh, there was threats of lawsuits against both San uh San Francisco and Los Angeles. I wanted to let you know that the city of Pasadena established the cap on food service delivery fees last week. So if that's something that any member of the council would like to see on a future agenda, please contact me and I'll work with the city manager. We'll get that on an agenda for some discussion and and for more information, but uh this is now clearly gone beyond just Los Angeles and San Francisco is is coming to the San Gabriel Valley. So if you have an interest in that and in discussing it, we're happy to do that. Uh, third item, Assembly Bill five seventy-one, I just wanted to give you a brief update on that. Uh, it is, becomes effective January first, two thousand twenty-one for our purposes. It puts a campaign contribution cap of three thousand dollars per person or per group to any local candidate. Uh, that three thousand dollars is subject to adjustment by the FPPC, but essentially puts the same cap on local officials that are on uh candidates for assembly or state senate. Uh, so, you know, the city doesn't have a hard cap. This would be our effective hard cap for the election in uh March of two thousand twenty-two. And then finally, there was a California Voting Rights Act case, and that that's something that we haven't really had to deal with in Temple City. But the California Voting Rights Act uh has caused many of our neighbors to uh move from at-large voting to uh voting by districts. And the California Voting Rights Act, the way that it had been interpreted uh was that if there is racially polarized voting, then there's a violation uh and the, basically the plaintiffs win. Uh, the court in the Santa Monica case and and for the mayor, this is the appellate court, so this is binding on everyone in in our area unless the California Supreme Court bring uh takes this up. They noted that a a section had been overlooked, and that was that uh the plaintiffs need to prove dilution of voting power. Not just prove racially polarized voting, but that uh, the at-large system dilutes the voting power of the uh minority group uh in order for there to be a violation, which means contrary to popular belief and contrary to really the way the courts had been finding up until a couple of weeks ago, uh, there has to actually be a remedy. Uh, the California Voting Rights Act, when written, one of the things written about it was that unlike the Federal Voting Rights Act, you didn't need to show that there was a way to fix the violation. Well, this court has written into the law that that you need, that that any remedy would have to be able to not dilute the voting power of the minority group. So, does this matter for Temple City? Probably not. Uh, based on the voters' choices over the last few years, we don't see the California Voting Rights Act being a big deal for Temple City. But if threatened, it does give us another uh avenue of defense where i- in the past, the best defense was to essentially pay off the plaintiffs and do what they've asked. Uh, the Santa Monica case actually matters, so. Uh, as we go down the line, if if this begins to be important to us, we'll brief you again, but it was a very interesting uh and sort of game-changing case in this area uh that came out a couple of weeks ago. Thank you all very much and uh happy to answer any questions by email, or as I said, especially on the food service delivery cap. Talk with uh Mr. Cook about getting something on the agenda if we wanna talk more.
Hey, thank you. Again, my my understanding of the reading of the Santa Monica case was gonna make it a little harder for these plaintiffs uh to to win these types of lawsuits, and you may not see as many cities rolling over and under the threat of litigation. Um, gives them a little bit more ammunition to fight these things and uh, yeah, I I I agree with your uh analysis of it. Um, I don't think Temple City is is one, would would we be in a, have a problem to begin with, but uh, you know, you never know. So, okay, would thank you for that. Um, so now we will move on to item thirteen, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Is anybody, did anyone, or does anyone have anything to report out? Any meetings, uh, no? Okay, I know we've heard, uh, well, we're gonna have one for the Primrose Park Heart Element Ad Hoc coming up and uh I just wanna remind everyone, of course, um that we have our joint meeting with the Temple City Unified School District on Thursday. Mr. Cook failed to remain as of that. But we all have the agenda and hopefully we'll see everyone there. It's starting at six thirty, I believe, correct, Mr. Cook? Six thirty? Yes, okay, so, um, basically the format this time will be that uh we will basically be running the meeting and uh, we've got the agenda and of course, uh, any other things that we wanna discuss. So, big, uh, it's hard for me to believe, I think it's been two years since we've had a joint meeting? Is that correct? Or twenty seventeen was the last time we had a joint meeting? At least that was the, seemed to be the the minutes that we're going to be approving is from twenty seventeen. Hard to believe that it's been that long, but looking forward to that. Okay, council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Councilmember Mann?
Well, thank you, Mayor Chavez. Uh, I don't have a lot to say today. Uh, I just wanna thank everyone for bringing back our uh law enforcement summary meeting that we have with the Sheriff's Department that was last Thursday at five PM. Um, I appreciate those updates. It keeps us in the loop as to how public safety is in our city. Um, our dedicated deputies uh do a fantastic job with those presentations, keeping us informed with all the latest statistics and news and and cases, so I really appreciate that. Um, and and we also welcomed uh Deputy Francis Bowie to the dedicated team, so I'd like to publicly welcome him again here in our regular city council meeting. Uh, and and I know we have a um it's gonna prob- it's gonna be our first virtual neighborhood watch that we're gonna try to host uh later this month, so. I'm excited, looking forward to seeing how that goes and and um uh, we're we're living in unusual times, but um, we're finding ways to try to bring back the types of uh meetings, events, and and just general information for residents that we've we've been doing all along. Um, and we should still continue to do it. Um, that's that's still very much important to us and and all the residents and businesses that that are in Temple City. So I just wanna thank everyone for for making that happen. Us and and all the residents and businesses uh that are in Temple City. So I just want to thank everyone for for making that happen. Uh, I know the captain Flores is on the line right now, so um I also want to personally thank him for his leadership and his. His hard work over at Temple Station. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Uh, councilmember Viscara, anything?
Um, not much, although I I did see part of the virtual concerts in the park. Listen to some of the music. It was well done, came out, I liked it. Um, other than that, thank everybody for all the work they've done on on everything. A lot has happened since I I was around before. I'm impressed. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Mayor Potem, you?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, again, want to uh thank everybody for keeping the city running. Uh, virtually and uh from a distance, from a safe distance. And uh, I mean, I think um the approval of several things tonight, the encourage, uh, the uh. Encouraging the businesses, the business activities, the approval, uh, an update of Primrose Park. Just shows that um Mr. Cook and his team just kept uh plucking along in spite of the pandemic. And it's very good to see Captain Flores tonight. And since you're here, I just really wanted to go out to say that um. We thank you and thank you for your team's dedication and. And want to, want you to know we're in, we always support uh when you guys out there and thank you for all the press responders.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Potem, you. Um, just a couple of things, I see that Eliana is on the line. Do we, Eliana, do we uh? Does our go-to meeting have the capability of providing virtual backgrounds to us? Do you know? She's still there?
They, they, they do not, unfortunately.
Oh, they do not. Someone told me that they do. But uh, somebody who who uses go-to meetings says that they do have virtual backgrounds, so I don't know.
My, my computer froze for a little bit, but um, no, uh, GoToMeeting doesn't have that function. I know Zoom does.
Okay, alright, thank you for checking on that. Um, you know, thank you for those comments and of course, uh. Big thank you to Captain Flores, of course, uh, not only for joining us tonight, but of course, uh, being a big part of our city. Uh, you know, if if anything, I think one word I comes to my mind when it comes to Temple City. During this whole pandemic is that we've been very resilient. Um, and what I mean by that is. We've learned to adapt, uh, and I think we've done it well, not only from the sheriff department. Uh, but from the city, from uh businesses, rentals, I mean. It's kind of nice not being in the news. It seems that these days, if you're in the news, that means you're not doing something right or something's going. Wrong. And uh, we're not in the news, and I think we're not in the news because we have figured out a way to. To, to, to do things, to do them correctly, and to keep providing the services. That our residents and our businesses have grown accustomed to. And if we're not, then of course, we will look into it. And take care of it. So, you know, I think the one takeaway for me after all this is over. Is I think we can all be very proud of ourselves, and that includes our sheriffs, our city staff. Our council and all of our residents and commercial businesses because, um, you know, we, we tend to get it. Um, and what is our, I keep, always forget it, what is our, our logo say, uh, we got this, Temple City or? Is, am I saying that correct, Brian?
You got this TC.
We got this TC. I mean, that, that, that really sums it up. I don't know who came up with that, but.
Brian Howard.
Brian Howard, get a big shout out to Brian. Good job, Brian, because uh it really sums up everything. That we do in Temple City, and I think, I think we can be proud and and I proudly wear my Temple City mask. And people notice it and they, they know Temple City and uh they say a lot of good things about that and. And that brings up my last point, and that is, please, I implore all of you out there, um, please wear your mask, um. You know, we've seen some reports in the last couple of days that our numbers are heading in the right direction again, and. There's got to be a reason for that, and I think hopefully people are getting at this time and following those social distancing rules. And wearing their masks, and so hopefully that will uh will make a difference, at least according to our scientists, it does. There you go. Good job, Vince. Alright, looks good. Okay. So we will now move on to additional public comments on items not listed on the agenda. I will first begin by asking our city clerk if there are any email requests to speak at this time.
Mayor, there are no email requests to speak.
Okay, and uh, if we can unmute the microphones, if there's anybody out there in the public who wishes to speak, uh, you may do so now. Um, Captain Flores, uh, you diligently hung in here throughout the whole meeting, so. Uh, I, I would like you maybe to say a few words to the public and. Uh, I don't know if you're prepared to do that, but I'm, I'm sure you can handle it, so thank, thank you, of course, for attending and and uh, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. I'd just like to say, it's really a pleasure to work uh with this council and. Uh, with the city manager. Everybody is so, um, just, we're on the same page as far as uh. Working together for the betterment and quality of life of the community. And uh, it's very challenging times for our deputies, especially our young deputies. Out in the field, but uh I assure the residents, uh, we have enjoyed a very uh safe city. And uh, our deputies are committed to you. And uh, often, uh, you know, the outpouring despite what. Uh, we may see in the media, uh, I gotta tell you, the residents uh in the Temple Station jurisdiction and in Temple City. I'm so grateful for uh the constant emails, the encouragement, the people who've dropped by the station. Uh, it's very encouraging and I'm happy to. Uh, give that message to the line troops because it means a lot hearing from our residents. We really. Uh, care for your city, uh, we really truly are partners and I appreciate that, so. I look forward to continuing to just work toward those endeavors, so thank you very much.
Alright, well, well, thank you, and please extend our best wishes to all of the team and their families, and of course, as we always do. We wish you uh safe, uh, safe travels and stay healthy. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, unless there are anything else, uh, we are at the end of our meeting and we're ready to adjourn, so. Um, thank you, everyone, for the good meeting tonight, uh, good comments, and everybody stay safe, stay healthy. And um, we'll see you soon. We'll see you Thursday, at least some of you. Okay, alright, we'll see you guys later.
Alright, have a good night.
We're adjourned. Thank you.